Call to order, the March 5th, 2019 Lake Mills City Council meeting. And I would like to have roll call, please.
Ms. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Fields?
Here.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Here.
Mr. Foster?
Here.
Mr. Fritsch?
Here.
Okay, if everyone would please stand for the Pledge of Legions. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, item four, correction and/or approval of the city council minutes of February 19th. And I'll accept a motion to approve.
So, Mo?
Second.
Have a motion. Any additions or corrections? Seeing none, call the roll.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
I'm staying.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed 4-0.
Moving on to correspondence. I did have some community contact. I had one constituent that had some questions, which I passed on to Mr. Wilkie, and he took care of. I did have some, a call from the, a person from the Sandy Beach Road group that were at the January 15th meeting. I also passed that over to Mr. Wilkie. I had some people stop me and talk to me about tonight's agenda items, and other than that, it's been pretty quiet.
I had a couple of contacts about Circle Drive. They were removing some trees down there, so I had them contact Rob. They were just wondering why so many trees are being taken down, how it was going to impact some of the wildlife down there. And then the other one, I wanted to follow up with Steve. We got the letter for the road to proceed.
Yes.
You just sent that out?
Yeah.
If you look on there, they still have Pat listed as the police chief, isn't the CCs?
Yeah.
Want to get that maybe forwarded to them?
They did today.
Okay. And then, I don't know, they've got all the other department heads. Do we want to add the fire on here and possibly EMS if they're getting all these updates emailed like this?
Actually, they go straight to them. Dave was there today, as was Todd.
They have their own avenue.
Yep, sounds good. That's all I have.
Okay, anybody else have correspondence?
I had contact today from an individual who would like the council to reconsider its snow plowing policies.
It's what?
Snow plowing policies.
Oh, okay.
I referred him to the website, because I believe we do have something posted there.
Yeah, we do. Anybody else? No? Okay, all right, moving on to questions and public comment. Just a second here. Public is encouraged to address the council at this time regarding items on the agenda. Public may comment also be made at this time on items that are not on the agenda if you have registered with the city clerk before the meeting has been called to order, and it's my understanding we have some people who did that for tonight's meeting. The state's open meeting law discourages action by the council on items not listed on the agenda. Please keep your comments listed, limited to three minutes, and state your name and address when starting your comments. Please fill out the sign-in sheet on the podium before you return to your seat. Okay, it is an open mic.
Can I cast something out?
Oh.
May I approach?
Yes, you can drop off something if you...
Hi, I talked to Steve. I was one of the people that...
Thank you.
...talked to you about the Circle Drive.
Thank you.
...issue with cutting down the trees, and I emailed you two victims.
Yeah.
About it, sorry about that.
Wood ducks.
Those are wood ducks.
I'll wait till you get back to the mic, so that the public can hear you.
My name is Ann Werner, and I live at 1009 South Ferry Drive, which is the last house on the right before it deadens and curves down to Woodland Beach Resort. My home overlooks the backyards of the two homes on the south side of Circle Drive, and also the city-owned wooded lot just below them, where the tree removal is taking place. I've lived here for 14 years, and have always enjoyed the wildlife visible in and from my backyard. I had never seen a wood duck prior to moving to Lake Mills, so I was simply amazed when I first saw them flying into the trees, and then learning that they establish nests in the cavities of old large trees, such as the ones in that lot. They are migratory and arrive in the spring to establish nests, lay their eggs, and raise their young. They can be seen all summer long, perched on branches, and entering and exiting their nesting sites. I can see one of the tree cavities they use from my kitchen window. These trees are also homes to owls that the residents in this neighborhood see and hear all year round. The owls begin mating in February and establish their nests, also in tree cavities, in March to lay their eggs in April. Imagine our dismay when the tree service arrived on February 22nd and began cutting down the trees. Mr. Getz told me that the trees are being removed due to their proximity to the Dvorak house, the possibility of them falling onto Dave's property, and if so, the subsequent liability to the city. While I understand this, I question the timing of this work as it relates to the wildlife which live there. There are other trees in the area, yes, but are the migrating ducks going to be able to find the cavities they need to establish new nests when their existing habitat has been destroyed? There may be other large trees in the Circle Drive area, but that does not mean there are suitable nesting sites of the proper size. I think that reducing the size of these natural habitats is never a good thing. I hope the city will consider halting the removal of any more trees from this lot, especially now during the owl and wood duck nesting season, and perhaps establish some type of environmental impact regulation or code in the city ordinances with regard to protecting wild animals and their habitat. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Yes, thank you for coming tonight and making this, bringing this to our attention. Yeah, I think it's a case of where we might save the tree for this year, but then what about for next year? And I don't know either if we have the answer for that question.
Well, right now, the concern is that it is their mating and nesting season, so...
If nothing else, you'd like it postponed till after their nesting season is over?
Yeah, whatever that may be, I'm not quite sure about that.
Right.
Whatever it may be, yes.
Okay.
I know you've contracted with the service, it's not the city.
Okay.
That's doing, that's doing the work. It is a, it is a private tree service. Melissa probably knows.
I thought you said Krusen or something like that?
Krusen.
Yeah, I think that's what it is.
How did the trees fare during the heavy winds that we had?
No problem. They've been there for a long time. It's a bit of a low area there, and I understand that. In fact, I know when Dave, I wasn't there when Dave built the house, but I heard that he had a lot of fill brought in, so I don't know if that made the area wetter. That's also in an area where I know the city did some drainage work last year, two years ago, to aid in the...
Maybe three.
In the drainage of that area.
Steve, is this something we can halt temporarily?
Oh, yeah. I mean, you could halt it.
I mean, I, I understand that you have these animals coming back, and they expect to go where they're going. Would be, but chances are they'll have the same issue next year when that tree's gone. But what you're thinking is give them some time to find a new one?
Well, halt it for now, because they're already in that, like I said, mating and nesting.
It wouldn't really be appropriate to take action on any of these items right now.
Right, okay. Well, I'm just asking Steve for...
Take in the information, and if it's something that you want to do, schedule another session, a special meeting, if there's a reason to go immediately. But no action tonight, I wouldn't advise that.
Thank you for coming. And thank you, Dan, appreciate that. We're just all animal lovers up here. Okay.
I have pictures too. This is the most, that's where I think, these are the barred owl, owl watched last May.
Is this one copy?
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine.
And these are just more of the owl.
I don't see it.
There are two of them, they are...
Oops, sorry.
That's right. They are right here, they're white feathers, they're barred owls.
Oh, my goodness.
Those are what hatch.
Oh, there they are, I see them. They're right here on the trunk of the tree there.
Yeah, this is just the...
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, these are barred owls.
Yeah, this one's easier to see, this one's easier to see.
Oh, yeah.
These are the wood ducks. There's two pairs that I saw last year.
Thank you.
What year is this picture from?
This one last April.
Okay.
And then here's another.
Okay. Very good. All right.
Hi, I'm Melissa Fearman, I live down on 225 Circle Drive, so if you are going down Circle Drive, I live directly across the street from the city lot. I'm here today to share my concerns with the cutting down of trees in the owl and wood duck habitat. The area that is our neighborhood is wooden, and it's beautiful, and it's home to lots of different species. In fact, I have turtles lay eggs every summer in my front yard, and it's almost to the day every year that they come. We have the barred owls that you saw, this is the third year that I've seen the babies hatch. We've been in our house for four years now. We've lived in Lake Mills since 2002, and I've been a summer resident my whole life. The barred owls are there, you see them pretty much all year. There's a, there's a pair, and then they usually have at least two offspring. The past two weeks, the city has been taking down the trees in the city lot across from the high house, where the barred owls used to be and used to raise their young. The day those trucks came in, I saw the owl fly away. He finally came back this past Sunday, and he sat on the branch and looked over the space where the two large trees, where they used to always sit, were taken down. Also, wood ducks reside in the trees as well. In fact, one of the trees taken down had a wood duck box on it. I understand that sometimes trees pose a threat to humans. What I would like to ask the council is that before the city starts taking down the trees, that some research is done to see if owls or other wildlife use the trees. If anyone would have asked myself, or at least three of my neighbors, we could have told you that for many years, these trees have been home to the owls. In almost four years that I have lived at my house, we have seen barred owls and barred owls raising their young, great horned owls. We even tried to save one, it had to go to Four Lakes, and it was too dehydrated, but there's also been a pair of great horned owls, snowy owls, bald eagles, wood ducks, and many other species of birds in these trees. Once it is identified that the trees are home to these interesting species, maybe there could be a less invasive way to protect both the humans and the wildlife? My request to the council is that before the city takes down trees, could there be research on the wildlife that would affect the area, that would be affected in the area, and to research less invasive ways to help both humans and the wildlife when considering taking down trees? One thought is that I have is would it be possible to trim branches back instead of taking down entire trees, in some circumstances? I believe I heard somewhere a long time ago, there might have been an ordinance on the books, that if it was owl habitat, that it could be protected. I'm curious what happened to that ordinance, and if that ordinance was in fact there, if we can possibly bring it back or consider other options. I know humans and wildlife have to coexist, and it'd be nice if we could help them. I live down there in Circle Drive, and I had heard, Rob Getz had mentioned, there were trees that fell down by my house. We'd moved into our house, and we were there for three weeks, and we had, it was a crazy storm that came through, straight, probably straight line winds or something, and five trees came down.
Oof.
All missing my house by 10 feet. I live there on the wooded lot, I understand my risk. And it was a cottonwood that fell and hit a maple, they landed in my front yard. Other side of me on my neighbor's private lot, oak tree fell down. Behind my house, a cherry tree fell down, and another oak fell this way, they all missed my house. None of those trees, you never would have thought they would have fallen, and I never would have asked anyone to take them down, because they all were fine. Strange weather happens, and there's also the, I mean, those trees, we had the ice just this last week with those 50 mile an hour winds, and no trees came down anywhere in our neighborhood. So, just something to think about that. Okay. If you could just help think about the wildlife once in a while, that'd be appreciated.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. And thank you for following the rules and contacting the city clerk before the meeting and letting them know that you were wanting to speak, that was very appreciated, so...
Found out about it.
No, that's fine. Your pictures are up there. Thank you. Ann, can we keep these?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
I have them.
Well, just asking.
Do you have any of these too, if you want?
No, no, that's fine. They're very lovely, though. Okay. Any other public comment tonight? So, okay. Oh, would you like to come on up? Yeah, let's, go ahead.
Good evening, I'm Pam Strike, district administrator for the Lake Mills Area School District. I'm just here tonight in support of our conditional use process that's going on with the high school addition, and I just want to take a moment to thank the city and all of the people that we've been working with. We've just had a, I think, just a tremendous working relationship, and we really appreciate the partnership that we have with the city. I'll be here tonight to answer any questions as that resolution comes forward.
Thank you for coming. We don't keep you busy enough, do we? Like Steve. That was my humor, everybody, in case there's any question. All right. Any other public comment? City manager's report.
I provided you with two check registers. I wonder if they're, did you divide it into, or is that the same one twice?
She should have given you a utility and a general fund.
Okay, one's a utility, okay, there it says that. The POP program, we've been advertising, and we have six people coming forward, we have 17 actual candidates, but several of them, I don't think qualify, but six are moving forward. A couple are supposed to answer some additional questions, we may find out. The ELC, we've planning on upgrading the radios to match all the countywide communications in the public works. And here, we've ordered that, that was part of the capital budget for this year, that's ordered, and we're expecting it shortly. The K-9 program is moving forward, apparently approved it at the last meeting, I wasn't here. Everything gets through when I'm not here. Anyway, all the, he's still taking donations, they're still providing opportunities to donate at, at a couple locations. Every other department is asked if they could add a dog, so that they can get donations.
We're going to train one to pick up leaves in the park, right?
We are still working on finalizing some of the wording in the WPPA union contract. It's not really a change in the financial portion of it, it's just, they wanted it broke down from monthly to hourly, for some reason.
What is that?
The pay rate.
Oh.
The union contract.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
For the police department. So, we're still working on that, but I think we finalized that, and they have it for signature, and we should see it here shortly. South Main Street, we had our meet, first meeting this morning. There weren't as many people as I thought they were going to be there, the school district didn't make it. But we still had more people than there were chairs.
Oh, really?
Oh, yeah. So, we had a lot of people there, a lot of conversation about downtown. They've kind of started already, probably saw a lot of them out today. There were quite a few issues that we debated this morning. They did provide us a timeline that they plan on digging next week. They plan on cutting the pavement next Monday, and actually starting to dig Tuesday and Wednesday, as per the notice that they've received, that they actually have an official date now.
Okay.
So, we talked about traffic control, detours, alternate routes, the current schedule update, potential delays, which obviously we have to talk about in this kind of weather.
Can I ask a question on that? Since it's still technically kind of winter-like, at what point will they cease operations or do, because of the winter weather?
Well, let's put it this way...
Anything below 50 below zero, or something like that?
Probably the lead one is frost. They cannot lay their piping on frozen ground. So, the initial phase down here will be deep, 15 feet deep, so that shouldn't be any problem. And it'll probably be right here in the end of Water Street. So, they actually asked for a change in the access to the fire department to be down lake, and then come down Main Street and in while they set that initial area. And then they're going to head north, but as it starts to come up out of the ground, they're hoping that it thawes quickly. They were talking about that in a lot of areas, they see between two and three feet of frost around here, so they think that if it rains at all, that that'll come out pretty quickly. But, you know, again, we're weather-related. Obviously, if it's 50 below, they're probably not going to put their people out there to work, because even in the ground, it's a little bit warmer, but it's 50 below, it's cold, you take your glove off, you're going to lose it, but they're trying to keep up with it, you know? We Energies has been out there going at it. And so, I anticipate that this'll, this'll probably start. We did talk about some specific control items, such as parking, signage, how we were going to put the signage up. The alley that comes off of the campus church street parking lot that hits Madison Street right there by BP, behind the wetlands, or behind the winery, we're going to make that one-way, and we're going to put no parking on both sides of the alley. And we hope that that controls the traffic in that area. We're looking at some, we've been talking about some temporary signs at North Main and Madison. The county has some signs there, and we were looking at maybe putting something over the top of that, or trying to find another location, and those are continuing to be conversations. I think you'll notice that we've removed the vast majority of the signs on Main Street in that area. There were some people who were actually parking in no parking areas this weekend, because the signage was down. We'd asked, we've had some conversation with some residents about changing their driveway locations, and we worked with them on that. A lot of conversation about water and sewer services, and lead lateral services, and what kind of timeline we would have on that. And if you want to replace your lead lateral service, you're going to do it when they run the service up, and you've got 72 hours to get it attached, because they're pouring concrete on it at the 72-hour mark, and it'll be covered up again, and then it won't be opened up again, and when it's opened up again for replacing the sidewalks, it comes off one day and goes on the next. So, anybody who's working on their water services or their sanitary sewer services has, needs to be in contact with a plumber and be ready to go.
You're, you're meaning that they have their contractors lined up on their end?
Yes, the property owners.
Property owners have the, they, they can't wait to have the city get to their house and then act on it?
Right.
They should be acting on...
It would be too late, because you've got 72 hours.
Okay.
They have to be ready to start digging the second it occurs.
Okay.
Or they can come back in after the concrete's poured and tear the concrete out again, and then put it in, and then pour the concrete back, but they're going to, that's going to be awful agitated if you wait until after all the new sidewalks are in. You can do it in that time period between when they put down the temporary concrete and when they put in the new, which could be a week or two, but, but if you come in and cut a hole in their brand-new concrete, they're going to be highly agitated.
Yes, yes. And it's, it would be expensive for the homeowner to do that as well. So, the least expensive would be to get on the ball right now, get things moving, have it ready to go, and, and tell our communicating guy what's going on.
Brian.
So, he knows, right?
Yep.
What's his name again?
Brian Kane.
Yeah, Brian Kane.
And he was at the meeting today, we kind of worked out a communication schedule. The contractor is required to notify everybody, and we decided to make sure that that stayed in place, and if people had some kind of problem, they would contact Brian, and Brian would get back to the contractor. That way, the contractor's contract obligates him to do that, and if he can slough it off onto Brian and something doesn't happen...
Right.
...he's going to blame Brian, so...
Right.
If, if it stays with him, he's responsible for it. If it, if there's a failure to communicate, it's his problem. Then, coming back and saying, hey, that didn't work, or, you know, you didn't notify me, or you need to contact me in another way, that can go to Brian, and Brian can find the guy and say, hey, we need to take care of this.
Okay.
So, we've kind of worked that out. We're still looking at trying to use their contractor to do the demolition at 1204 South Main Street. They will, I got the impression that within a week or two, they're going to start removing, they're going to start cutting down the trees on South Main Street, and they'll probably within the next two to three weeks, they're going to start demoing that white barn on the south end. So, we were hoping to be able to get them to do the demolition on our property there as soon as they do that. So, are there any questions on South Main?
So, the meeting went well, a lot of people there, people got their questions answered?
Well, it was all city staff, contractors, other utilities.
Businesses.
Yes, the EMS. There were no, there were no businesses, this...
Oh, there weren't?
No, no, this wasn't that type of meeting.
Oh, okay.
So, we, we moved through that, I think we got a lot done.
Thank you for doing that. Thank you for staff. Would you relay that to staff?
Yep.
Okay.
One more thing is that the street lighting will get shut off, and they'll start removing the poles. So, as that starts to move down the street, it'll start getting dark...
Ah.
...on Main Street. So, you may notice, and as they move south, even though the portion of the street may be done, the poles may not go up right away, so it may stay dark for a while, although it's probably more of an issue in the wintertime than it is in the summertime.
So, now we're not only concerned with dark stores, we're concerned with dark streets.
Dark streets.
Two different, entirely different things.
And we've always, and we've had a... And we've had a dark skies ordinance for several years.
Yep, we have, yep, you have, we have, mhm. So, okay, well, thank you for mentioning it. So, I think what we're saying is if you need to walk on South Main Street, take a flashlight or use the light on your phone. We don't want anybody falling into a hole somewhere, because they can't see. The streetlights might not do it for you.
Yep.
And safety is important, so...
Mobley Street's going to, the bid's out, the public information meeting is going to be the 21st at, how do you know?
I want to say, I feel like 6.
I think it's 6, maybe 5, but it's probably 6.
Is that here?
Yes, it's here in the building.
And what did you say the time would be, probably 6?
Probably 6.
21st?
Yes.
21st of March?
It's definitely the 21st. The time is kind of up in there yet.
We think it's 6.
Yep.
Okay. All right, and that'll be an update, or is that with the engineers?
That will be the same as what we just had for South Main Street. There'll be the state engineers there, city staff, and the contractor.
Okay.
And the contractor will kind of give you an idea of what his timeline is, and what kind of work he's going to be doing, and, and those types of things.
Now, how do residents get notified of that meeting?
The state handles that. I think they mail letters.
So, I should get a letter?
Yep.
Okay, well, we'll see if we do.
And there'll be, there'll be an advertisement in the paper, too, I'm pretty sure.
Yeah. Well, I know people do like to go to the meetings, if they can, so... I'll have it on the website, too.
Yeah, it's on the website, too.
Okay.
Ours and theirs, so...
Excellent.
I don't think there's anything else substantial on that one. American Way, the 2019 construction projects out there went to bid today. The engineer's estimate was 1.977, the bid came in at 1.3. The bid came in at 1.3. So, it was significantly lower, and now we still have some engineering on top of that. But it broke down pretty well for us.
Good.
Within the, within the dollar numbers that we thought when we originally started looking at it. So, we should be able to cover that relatively easy between the special assessment accounts. We'll have to borrow money and put it in the special assessment accounts for the, the $650,000 for the subdivision development. They pay that back in three years. The American Way portion on the south side of Wallace Park, that's a ten-year, three percent.
Oh, okay.
And so, we'll, but that, we get paid back, they'll pay back the, the entire amount of the loan. So, we'll, we'll be able to schedule those borrowings in that fashion. Trying to think, the bike trail came in at 92,000, so I think we'll do that. I know there was some question on it, but I think if you have done any reading, like in the Municipal League Magazine this week, an important feature of any community is bike trails.
Right.
So, that was, that was an important feature that I think we'll continue to move forward with there. Sandy Beach, we did look at the thirty percent drawings today. The public information meeting is coming up on March fourteenth.
Thursday, next week, Thursday?
Yes.
The fourteenth.
And we have worked with a gentleman who said he was a specialist in the boat cleaning facilities.
Good.
He did leave us like a ton of options. So, I, Patricia emailed today, asked if we needed any help. That was one of the things I asked if she could comment on. Told her that I should have an initial set of drawings in the next couple of days. She might wanna stop in and go over with me. And the meeting was there. And then after the meeting is over and we started preparing for what we would bring to council, she could come in and work with us. So, we're kinda headed down that road. We're required to do our every two-year dam inspection, five thousand.
Before you go to the dam, just to reiterate for the public, so that next Thursday night is an open, so like a work session?
Yes, it's, it's more like a work session for the public, not the council.
Right, okay. But, but we will be here?
Yes, you can be here. We've, we've noticed it so that you can be here.
Will we be here or will we be out there?
No.
Oh.
Downstairs.
Oh, downstairs, okay.
Yeah, it'll be like those public information meetings that DOT does. Or when we did the dam, do you remember when we did the dam?
Yes.
It'll be more like that one.
Okay, got it. And so, we'll, if you have questions or you think you have a good idea about Sandy Beach, that would be a good time to show up at the meeting because it's open for comments from the public. And there will be engineers there to answer questions?
And planners.
And planners, and a lot of people who know things that I don't know. So, that's next Thursday night, six o'clock downstairs in this building, Sandy Beach. Okay, thank you. Now you can go on, sorry.
Dam inspection, every two years we have to do the inspection. It's five thousand dollars. I don't know if you remember the Mill Pond weather vane? I'm trying to keep it on my list to try and remind Paul so that when the spring comes, he finally puts it in.
Can you repeat that? I couldn't go out here. I think my ear is clogged up.
The Mill Pond weather vane, do you remember what that is?
Where is that?
Well, right now, it's in the Public Works Building. But it used to be a big black metal thing that had like an old water wheel on it, and it had a vane on the back of it, and it was supposed to turn with the wind.
And where was it originally?
It was out by the spillway. It was part of the fence project.
Oh, okay.
Oh, in front of the dam?
Yes, by the dam.
By the dam.
Actually, in front of the spillway at the time.
All right, yeah, okay.
And so, that, we'll try and get that back up this spring.
Good. I'm sure somebody in town will be excited.
Yeah, the Arts Alliance, I know, keeps asking me, and I keep asking Paul, and he keeps-
Good.
Thinking about it.
I'm so glad that it, it's kind of like other icons in the city that, you know, we have to fix or remove at times and then put back. Thank you.
The Wetlands Park, I don't know if you remember, but last year that flooded up there where the water crosses.
On Highway V.
Yes, we got our DNR permit to clean that ditch. Dwayne took care of that for us.
So, that should keep Highway V from flooding once that's cleaned out again.
Well, let's put it this way, it should reduce the possibility substantially.
Unless we have a ten-inch rain.
Yeah, there could be some-
Let's pray.
There's always an event that could make it flood. But let's hope that this reduces that. As long as I've been here, that was the first time that flooded. And normally, everywhere else in the city floods before that floods, and, and that day it did not. So, that was a very unique circumstance, which led us to investigate items further.
Good. Thank you for taking care of that.
We submitted our February lead service lateral reports. We're down to about 250 left. Of that, 200 are in trailer parks, which I assume they're all private within the whole trailer park. And the vast majority of them are gonna be plastic. But we still have to go in and do the inspection. The other fifty are in areas that are 1960 and after. So, we left those last because everyone that we've done, that's 1960 or after, has been copper. And then there are a couple of people who just have been difficult to get a hold of.
Well, that's good news.
We've replaced about 500 electric meters and 450 water meters for AMI, so that's moving forward quite quickly.
What percentage of replacement are we at, sort of, roughly? I'm sorry I sprung that on you.
About twenty percent.
Oh, okay, so we got a ways to go yet.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. The radium and corrosion control are still in process. You know, probably we won't know for quite a while on those. The DNR hasn't responded on our radium testing and proposals. And the corrosion control, you knew that was gonna be a year of testing the sampling at the, in that rack that we built at the, well. Water tower bid will be on your next agenda. It was a little bit lower than, than the engineer's estimate, so that was good. I think we bid it with a, with an alternative. One was complete coverage and one was partial. And by that, I mean, you can shield it so that none of the debris that's being blasted off the tower falls anywhere but inside that blanket that hangs off or curtain that hangs off the tower and then lands only on the water tower site. Sometimes they use partial because if there's nothing to the way of the prevailing wind, they don't worry about it. We bid both ways. We had a bid that was under the estimate, the estimate was 400 and some thousand. We had got a bid with full protection for 367, I think it was.
Wonderful.
And so, we're gonna, we're gonna go that route.
We like that bid.
Yeah. Bids, bids came in pretty good this, this winter. And Riverwood, with that bid's in, the special assessment waiver and the CSMs are come, have been, we've been told that they've been mailed. So, that's good. We'll have those in hand. On that, I don't have anything. You have any questions? Look like you're bored anyway.
None. Thank you so much for the update. I know the public appreciates it too. Those of you that are at home, I know you like to know what's going on. And Steve does a nice job of giving the council a report. We appreciate that. We're certainly keeping him and the rest of the staff very busy. So, you do not have to worry about your tax dollars not being put to good use. So, okay. Moving on to item eight, acceptance of minutes of the Parks Board, January 23rd, 2019. Planning Commission, November 27th, 2018. Planning Commission, January 22nd, 2019. And Housing Authority, October 23rd, 2018. These minutes will be placed on file. And that will move us into active business. I'm wondering if, do we wanna move item F up to the beginning so that Mrs. Strick can go and do more work for the school district? No? Well, I would like to propose that.
She likes hanging around with us. She likes hanging around with us.
Well, would you like to be moved up? Let's do that so that she make her own decision, and it's nice she came tonight. I'd like to have a motion to move item F to the beginning of the agenda.
So, move.
Have a second?
Second.
Okay. Looking, and now we need to vote.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
Okay, that moves us to resolution 1912. Give me a, you can read that while I get my computer functioning again. I went to sleep. So, hang on. Sorry I pulled this fast one on you, Heather.
It's okay.
So, here. Okay, resolution 1912. Just read the title.
Okay. Resolution 1912, conditional use permit declarations and findings, Lake Mills Area School District, Lake Mills High School.
Okay. Now, I think we need a motion for this so we could discuss it.
So, move.
Second.
Okay, I have a second. Okay, motion and a second. Now, Steve, you wanna just, what do you wanna say about it, maybe for the public more than us since we kinda know what's going on here?
Well, it's been a school for a long time and functioning as a school, but there are some changes that, that are going on down there. So, they're required to complete a conditional use permit. They've always had athletic fields down there. Probably the most significant change is the lighting on the fields. But if you read Dustin's report, the lighting all fell within the requirements and was shut, has a requirement to be shut off at a certain time. And there's not a lot of, you got the fish hatchery to the north, and they have a large field to the west, east, and to the south is the golf course. So, there's not a lot of spillover any, anywhere anyway, so. There's some small changes overall. They're adding several classrooms to the front. They're making some modifications back in the old tech areas. And they're adding sprinkling. And I hope that they're adding several fire hydrants. Other than that, it's, it's, I don't see any substantial change. I don't think anybody really noticed anything different. Other than when you have to go to a football game, you have to park down on the south side rather than over on campus.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Don't, don't park at the campus because you'll have a very difficult time seeing the football game.
Yeah.
Will that possibly require some changes in parking?
I don't know, you know, the, the school already has a lot of parking, and you may have to park, you could park all the way on the south side by the auditorium and walk around the south side. You can park all the way around the front and around the back. We have soccer games there all the time, and we have lots of parking left over. So, I, I can't, even with a big football game, I can't imagine that they would have any problem. And if, in the worst-case scenario, you can park on East Lake Park Place. It's solid enough, it'll hold you.
Does anybody have questions for Pam since she's here? Mike said that things were, went very well at the planning commission?
Yeah, no questions.
No questions, said no, nobody objecting to anything at the planning commission? And it came with an approval from the planning commission?
Yep.
I got one question. Where does most of the water from the athletic field drain?
Into a stormwater detention basin on the north end.
And then into the DNR land?
Where the trees are there?
Yeah, well, used to be trees.
Used to be?
It, it runs to the north, and then just north of the tennis courts, there's a big stormwater detention basin along that bank. And then you come down the bank, and then there's a sidewalk, and then you come down to the bank, to the curb. That water comes out of there. When we redid East Lake Park Place, we laid a big storm sewer on the north side of that street. Those were tied into that, and they run down that storm pipe to the east, and they outlet into a ditch that runs along the east edge of that fence in the fish hatchery north to Rock Creek. And it hits almost there where Grove Street crosses Rock Creek.
So, the start changing, the surface then? Well, is this, the art, it's an artificial surface, right? So, will that increase the drainage?
It'll increase it a little bit, but the stormwater detention basin was built big enough to handle it, and they've added some additional storage in, in the south end. So, I, I don't see any problem. When, I would've complained a little bit, but a couple of years ago, when we redid Catlin, we, we captured everything along the north end there, and so now that's captured and, and so everything, it's never been a big issue out there. Most of it was there coming off the parking lots there by the administrative building, the, in front of the high school, and then went to the, to the north, and then the one across the, the front of the administrative building there and then out to, that was where the most of it is. But that's, that's pretty much been fixed and captured now. There's, it's pretty clean. Stormwater on the backside won't be an issue.
Good question. Have you made a-
Yes. Another point, I guess, having occupied the building quite a while, I noticed the signage, no change in signage. I was thinking, you know, with the addition, wouldn't, as you're coming into Catlin, wouldn't it be nice to have a little sign that said Lake Mills High School so you know you're going in the right spot?
Are you talking right on Main Street?
Yeah, from Main Street on the south side.
Ah, that's private property as far as I'm, I've been told, and that's not available for us to put signage on Main Street.
No, I'm talking about on the building.
Oh, on the building itself?
Yeah.
We're, we have designed the front of the building to intentionally look like it's not the front entrance. Because, so, so that, you know, as you drive in right now, you see the big auditorium sign.
Right.
It lets you know that. We're gonna, and then the front is gonna be actually a great deal of glass. And so, we did that very intentionally without any really predominant doors so that people will know that they're continuing on to the front of the school around.
They haven't arrived yet.
That they haven't arrived yet. Keep going, you haven't arrived yet. If you could envision, the addition will go out to where the trees are right now, if you can see that tree line. And I'm not sure about signage, if that would even be allowed in that space. We haven't talked about that.
You could put signage in a front yard setback. You only have so much. I don't know if a school is limited. That would be a question, not a question for me.
There is signage right as you come in that says auditorium parking this way, front entrance this way. There is signage, a small signage right there at that time. But, but I know what you're, you're talking about, something.
Something that's big that says, this, this is it.
Like, it used to be on the overhang.
Yeah.
It said Lake Mills High School at that. I can bring that up if there's anything that we could possibly do. But we don't want people to believe that that's the front entrance.
They have not arrived yet.
Right. Getting back to your question about stormwater, yesterday we did interviews for the turf, and that is a very permeable surface with a tremendous underlayment, and, and that's a very well-designed project to deal with stormwater off of that.
Not like the old Astro turf.
It's not cement with a piece of carpet on the top, no. It's, it's pretty impressive.
You still get rug burnt. John's got three of them.
Permanently marked.
You're playing in Stillwater, and he took them.
See, it was worth staying for. Any other questions for Pam or Steve or Mike? Okay. Well, seeing on, I guess we have a motion on the floor. Hang on, I'm trying to get back to it. I'm slow, and my computer's keeping speed with me tonight. So, would you call the roll?
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields? Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
Okay, and we wish you the best of luck on your project. May all the construction angels be helping.
No rain.
Okay. All right, moving back to item A on the agenda. Discussion and decision on the request for the Lake Mills area chamber to use the community center for casino night fundraiser. Would you read that title for us, please?
City council motion nineteen dash three dash one dash one, authorizing the use of the Lake Mills Community Center by the Lake Mills Chamber of Commerce.
This is a yearly event, sort of, and no changes from, except for date?
I think there's a slight change, used to be run by Rock Lake Activities Center.
Oh, and now the chamber is doing it?
Chamber took it over last year.
Did they?
Yep.
So this is the second year.
Okay, well, that's good to know. Do I have a motion?
I move adoption of motion nineteen three dash one dash one.
Second?
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second, any discussion other than what we already had? Okay, call the roll.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Bless you. Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Yes, aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
Okay, thank you. And we wish them luck on their event. B, resolution nineteen eight, fire department reclassification and compensation, would you read that motion, that resolution, please?
Did you want the whole thing read?
Do we want the full thing read, or just the title?
I can add it here again.
Title?
Yeah, title.
What's the pleasure of the council, just the title or the whole motion? Do we have a choice? Yes, we have a choice. Okay, read the title.
Resolution nineteen dash zero eight, fire department reclassifications and compensation.
Thank you. Hang on, I guess it's still getting to it here. Oh, let's see. And, back to the right one. Sorry, a little slow here, told you things were slow here. Okay. All right, I, for us to discuss this, we need a motion and a second. Is there any motion or a second?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Okay, so, we are now in discussion phase for resolution nineteen oh eight. Okay, what is the pleasure of the council? How would you like, is there something, anything specific? I do want to thank Steve and staff, fire department, and whoever else played a big role in putting all this together, because I know there's hours and hours of work on this. So, want to thank you for doing that, Steve, and, and this is not an easy or a simple subject. Is there any desire from anyone on the council to ask any questions at this point? That might be the best place to start.
Do you want to kind of give us a quick rundown of where we're at with this?
Okay, so, we currently have a part-time chief, and a full-time deputy chief, and a bunch of additional staff that's paid some type of salary, volunteer salary, or paid-on-call salary, or radio, or, you know, some type of additional salaries that accumulate. And you also have full-time city employees who respond to calls, who are paid time and a half when they respond. The organization of the fire department, in my opinion, should have a chief, full-time chief, rather than a full-time deputy chief. We, I suppose, we could have debated having a full-time chief and deputy chief, I could have just asked to have that, then we could have just sent it to the Police and Fire Commission, they could have decided who moved into the other one. I tried to keep the finances as clean as possible, so in other words, I tried to fit it into the existing budget. So when you look at it, I, I have a full-time chief with a recommended salary, and a captain that would take on fire prevention duties. Fire prevention duties are probably the most significant activity other than administration in the fire department. There are a lot of fire dues, things that go along with it, but, but fire prevention and the activity of going out and doing inspections on a regular basis, you, you might have noticed that we've actually been more active in the last several months, you might have gotten more complaints from citizens, I know that I have, about the fact that we were doing a lot more inspections, and following up on the inspections and actually requiring some changes. So what I did was, I looked at it, and I said, okay, I want to keep some money in there for paid-on-call. We probably won't need as much paid-on-call as we have now, because we'll have two full-time employees, but we're still going to need some, so I tried to keep, you know, you're, you're looking at about forty thousand dollars for the volunteers, forty to forty-five thousand dollars, and then the rest for paid-on-call, so that, that additional forty-five, forty-seven thousand dollars would go to, to paid-on-call, and then you'd have the two full-time officers available. The structure of the fire department would stay relatively the same, you'd have a chief, an assistant officer, the chaplain, and four captains. That's not inconsistent with what's currently there now, it's, it's relatively similar. You'll note that there were some listed as some vacancies currently in those positions, but it's kind of the way it's been laid out for, for a couple of years, other than the change in the classification of the deputy chief to full-time chief. That makes the leadership of the fire department, in my opinion, an easier task, substantially easier task. Because the full-time chief is going to get all the questions, be responsible for all the answers, going to be asked to provide all, you know, and so that, from that standpoint, it, it goes further, and it's easier for him to deal with it in that standpoint. So, from a pure organizational structure, that's the recommendation I came up with. It fits within the budget, we, we move some money around within the existing budgets, and it works. The, I mean, the salary, when you look at our chief, he doesn't run a fire department for a city of six thousand, he runs a fire department for a community of twelve thousand. So it's kind of like a fire district, when you look at the ones that say "fire district," he handles the city, town of Lake Mills, town of Waterloo, town of Astelin, town of Milford. So, not all of them, but portions of it, enough that the population goes up, so that's when you start looking at the salary. Now, when we did the police chief, we picked the top candidates, and two of them said no, because the wage wasn't enough, and one of them did interview and then asked for a substantial amount more than we were offering. So, well, we had a qualified candidate, and he may not have been the top or the best candidate that was there, but we definitely had a highly qualified candidate internally, he took the wage that we were offering. From what I see out there, we're going to run into the same thing in the fire department, and so I tried to get the wage as high as possible to try and see what we could get. Now, obviously, if we convert the existing full-time person into the, the full-time position, if we make a full-time chief and eliminate the full-time deputy chief, we have an employee who is the most likely to move up, he would fill out the, what we do is we would post, and once we got those postings, if we felt we had enough qualified candidates, we would send that to the Police and Fire Commission with a recommendation. But it's not a guarantee, but from my standpoint, I would, you know, we did, Dan and I did a significant number of interviews with people in the fire department. We have talked to staff, I've talked to other fire departments. One of the top qualified fire officers in the county, for sure, so I felt comfortable in that. So I, I feel like I can't guarantee it, because the Police and Fire Commission's there, but the process would definitely be there, but I had to ask the council before I went to the Police and Fire Commission which way you wanted to go, because if I created, if I sent it up as a part-time chief, what, we're not going to get anything. If I sent it up as a full-time chief without eliminating the deputy chief position, I, I'm going to have a tough funding question. And so I, this is the way I structured it. I felt comfortable with it. The, and you can ask any one of the city staff, you don't have to ask me, the, as acting chief, he has been outstanding, he has gone above and beyond the call of duty, he's answered every question I've had, he's filled out every form I've had, he's got a ton of ideas, he's already been involved, heavily involved in recruiting pops, we have a significant number of new people interviewed, so from that standpoint, I think we have put in place a good process to move forward, saying, okay, we need a full-time chief, we don't necessarily need a full-time deputy chief. You could if you wanted to, but that would, that would take some more money dipping, and would, let me put it this way, twenty twenty-two, I think you could make it happen, but in twenty nineteen, I don't think you could.
What do you mean by that?
In twenty twenty-two, tid number two comes off, and you get fifty percent of the full evaluation that comes into it, you don't get a hundred percent, which would be really nice, but you get fifty percent of that evaluation, that generates a, a significant additional value to the city, and so we would be able to do that, I've been kind of laying that aside as a time period where we could do some significant pay adjustments. But that's, and so that's why I've been trying to structure these within the scale of what we currently have. That's why the, the recommendation has come forward as it is, so you guys kind of control where I head next.
I'd like to pass the gavel to Mike, so I could speak.
I've got it, so go ahead and-
Okay. First of all, I want to say that I have a feeling that Steve could talk on this subject, not only while he's awake, but while he's asleep, and frontwards, backwards, inside, outside, and all the way around. I think you know a lot more than I know, and maybe more than all of us know, and maybe we need to know more than we know right now. One of the things that I wanted to bring up tonight is, I know that my constituents, when they voted me into this office, expected me to do what they would do if they were here, and I know that a large percentage would say, what is the picture in our surrounding districts, or fire districts, and do we know, you know, how, what we're offering in this resolution falls in the picture of Jefferson, Fort Atkins, and Cambridge, and so forth? And even though we got a lot of information, we got some tonight, but what I guess I would like, and I feel that my constituents expect me to ask for, is an, a comparable, comparable apples and apples, as best we could do from, from our surrounding fire districts, and so that we, as a council, can look at that and say, yes, we know we're spending more money, you know, I think the voters in Lake Mills are savvy enough to understand that everything is costing more money, so I think that part we're okay with. However, how much more I think we need to show them what we're doing and why we're doing what we're doing? And I don't feel I can do that at this point with the information I have, so I was going to, I would like to ask staff if they would compile a report that shows our surrounding districts, what the chief makes, what the, if you have the other position in those districts, what those people make. And the piece that I feel is missing here is, I don't think we, and it's not like it's intentional oversight, but I'm thinking that we're maybe underpaying our fire department work, our regular firemen, and I, I, maybe I'm wrong, and if, if the numbers come back and say, Diane, you're wrong, okay, I stand corrected, but I think if we're going to be improving and putting more money into the fire chief's job, we should also be paying our firemen as good as we can afford to pay them, because they're putting their lives on the line. So, what I would like to ask at this time is, I, I would like to make a motion to table this item until such time that we get the information that I just requested, so we could make a better decision.
Okay, so we have a motion to table, now do we have any, do we have a second?
Second.
And any discussion? Yeah, go ahead.
Structurally, I don't have much of a problem, but a big question for me is, and this is awfully hard to do it, we, is what, this is like kind of a, you swallow an apple, and what's the effect, the effect going to be down the road? And to, like, the other, how does, how does the various other jobs in the city pay salary, pay scale, how is that going to be affected, and so on, what's the potential, as much as we can project?
Well, this is, you're talking about some of the issues that are, are out there, you know, so when we looked at certain jobs, we look at, at, first of all, you have to look at your tax levy cap, and how much you can raise, second of all, you have to look at what we call salary compression, so, like in Mick's case, we had sergeants who were making more than eighty, eighty thousand dollars.
With overtime?
Yeah. So, in this case, you don't have that, but you, you look around, and you have the documents there that show that, that the salary is not out of line. And it's within the boundaries of the existing budget, so it's not an additional pay. We, if you were looking across other city staff, you could say that he falls kind of within the category of, of a police chief, you're going to normally find that your police chief and your fire chief are pretty close together in pay. The, especially when you have a, a fire chief that's got a bigger district than the police chief. We certainly have pay issues across the board, you know, most of our salaried staff is now being passed up by our wage staff because of overtime and those types of issues, but that, we've discussed that, and Vicki suggested at the one executive session that we might look at some ideas of how to fix that, so I've already started on that with staff. And you'll note, last year, like, I've noted that, that the city clerk, HR, was at the low end. Last year, if you look at the eighteen to nineteen, she took a seven and a half percent pay increase. And we would look at, you know, making sure that those kind of adjustments, as we make the, the other considerations here moving forward. I don't see anyone that would be outrageous, you know, we're consistent on the volunteer pay, you do not, and Vicki can speak to this pretty substantially, but volunteer pay is volunteer pay, once you get outside something, you don't, it's not volunteer pay anymore. And you don't want to do that, I mean, we're already paying some people some pretty stiff time to be responding to fire- fire calls. If we were looking at something that was out of line, it would be paid on call. But with as much as we spent on the paid on call, we could probably, they've been taking the same increases everybody else has for the last several years. They just haven't changed our advertisement. The amount of money that we've been using, they actually could probably pay more than what that would even come out to because they just haven't, they haven't been using a lot of it. So I guess from my standpoint, within the existing framework of the budget, we could probably deal with everything that Diane has asked about.
What about five or, I, I guess my concern is with the potential for problems five or maybe even, you know, it's.
Yeah, see that, but when you're within the existing scope of the existing budget, everything goes up at a percentage. So everything that I've shifted within the existing budget stays the same. So we wouldn't change five years, ten years, fifteen years out based on these numbers.
Okay. I guess that was a part that I was having a, if you're going to change the fire chiefs, you know, where do, where are you going to be fitting in? Where's the attorney going to be fitting in? And our chief financial officer shouldn't make a difference.
That's, that's less of a question on the fire chief.
I know.
Than it is about, than it is about linemen. You're going to have linemen who are, are going to be making ninety-five thousand dollars a year. So if you want to talk about wage compression, then you're going to talk about, okay, you have senior staff who's making less than a, a thirty-year-old out hanging wires. And, and so that's from my standpoint, that question isn't really relationship to the chief. It's a much broader question across the board for us on, you know, what the, the wage demands are and where they should fall and how we're going to fund those changes, which I, I think Vicki made a very good statement in our last executive session. And I put, and I'll put a get together a proposal for that, but I don't think this impacts that at all.
So you're saying, what I hear you saying is the budget, we could, we could change it and the budget can handle it.
Yep. It might be better if, if Tony, if the governor, everyone, ever's proposal goes through, but let's say it doesn't. This is still scaled to meet with what we've been living under. So if, you know, if we got that automatic two percent, whether we hit that new construction or not, uh, that would be, that would give us a lot more room. I shouldn't say a lot more room, but it would give us a consistent basis for, for being able to make some changes. Probably the most significant change in this proposal is that one, we'll have one additional employee on health insurance. But that was, our, it's covered within the scope of the budget. Uh, but most of the payroll goes up at about, you know, one and a half to two percent. And, um, health insurance doesn't necessarily follow that. But that would be the only item that I could think of that would be outside the scope. Everything else is pretty much right on.
That would have been that, uh, fire prevention captain you're talking, right?
Yes.
Can I ask what the chaplain does with this guidance?
Yeah, he provides, uh, them with a, a response for, you know, from the, from the religious community. Uh, the police department has long had a chaplain. Glenn Herschberger was for a while. I think Craig Legel is now.
Because we have a motion to table and a second.
Yeah, it's not debatable, is it?
Yeah, it's my understanding that we're supposed to be voting on that.
Yeah.
That's.
We need to do a vote on the table, the motion to table.
And I'm very comfortable with it being tabled until.
Okay.
So we can, we have an executive session coming up next meeting anyways.
Okay.
All right, let's call a, a vote on.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm not in charge.
On the table.
Ms. Schmidt?
This is the motion to table.
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
No.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
No.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed three, two.
Okay. So I think we can pass you the gavel back.
I guess I get it back.
There you go.
Okay, thank you very much. All right.
So my understanding on that is that it's motioned until the next meeting because we have this closed session. We'll plan for it on the agenda at the next meeting.
Uh, as far as, as long as I get the information I've asked for, which is the comparative salaries of the area.
Yeah.
And, and that wouldn't be necessarily you, but you know.
Well, what I'm, I'm not worried about that, but it, when you look at comparables, it's a lot different than the area. You know, like most.
Well, uh, let me say this. I understand we don't necessarily have apples and apples, but when I talk to my constituents, they want to know what are we paying compared to Waterloo, Watertown, Jefferson, Fort, Cambridge, you know, the, and, and they know that they're not all the same, but they want to know. They want to know where do we fall? Why are we paying what we're paying? Those are the questions I have to answer my constituents. And I don't feel I have that tonight.
All right. And, but I guess what I'm trying to structure is, is that, um, you know, you have Watertown, which has full-time fire department. You have Fort, which has, uh, full-time during the day. You have Jefferson, which, um, they have probably five or six full-time employees, most of them paramedics, I would guess. And then they have a lot of additional part-time staff. So they have like, so if you took all the staff that they have, or you're just comparing chiefs, and if, if you're just comparing chiefs, do you want to compare it? And then I go through and I, I say, okay, you know, how's your department structured? How many officers do you have? How many full-time employees do you have? How many volunteers do you have? What's your, what's your service area? What, you know, what kind of experience do you expect? So when you're, if you're looking at a very simplistic one, it's not going to give you much information. If you're going to look, I can give you, in fact, I think it might be on there with the Watertown and Fort Atkinson chief already make. And that's more than eighty thousand dollars. So.
Well, like I said, we could, I can talk to you after the meeting about more specifics, but I, I just, I just don't feel I'm doing my job as the council rep for my district if I didn't ask for this before I voted.
That's good.
That's all.
I just want to make sure that I'm hitting the point because I.
Right.
I don't want to be imprecise.
I, I think that.
You're hardly ever imprecise. I mean, you're very good at that.
I think that we might want to expand beyond Jefferson County, well, you said Cambridge, but my recollection from when I used to work with fire department staffing issues was there's also, um, Oregon and a couple of other places in Dane County that might be comparable. And one way of kind of short cutting the discussion is, is it all volunteer? How much is full-time and how much is part-time? You know, you, you don't have to go into extreme detail just to kind of get a flavor for it. And I think one that we forgot was Johnson Creek.
Yeah, Johnson Creek.
My understanding, the way we've talked about it here, there is no more added money into the fire department's budget. You're just moving stuff internal to the fire department budget.
I haven't increased the budget at all.
There is no increase anywhere. We're not giving fire department more money. It's the same money they've been allocated. We're just moving it to pay different people.
Right.
But how do we come up with a second full-time employee? There must be some, someplace where there's got to be a portion and a shove to make a, a full-time salary for that captain position.
Well, if you look at it, there was a deputy chief salary and the chief salary. And that made the chief, the full-time chief salary. Then you had, um, a lot of extra pay that was going for all types of other things. So, uh, but mainly POP. So we were ending up with a lot of POP salary left on the table. So I moved a lot of the POP salary in to cover the, um, additional employee. That's why I said it was one forty-eight. I'm not proposing ninety-two. But when you look at the breakouts for what we're paying, um, we haven't hardly paid any on POP and, and, uh, most of it has gone to our volunteers. And so it was like, okay, we have some left for POP. We have, um, enough to cover our regular volunteers and we get two full-time employees. And, um, we get that administrative one that we need and we get a, a full-time inspector. Between the two of them, they should be able to cover the inspections now, you know? So we had a contracted, we had a line item for contracted inspectors. That should go away. If you look at, um, the chief, even though he was scheduled to make nineteen, was generally making about between twenty-four and forty. So those dollars all come back into it. So it, I felt very comfortable in that, the way I had restructured it met the requirements. Now, if you looked at what the, pay for that type of position in the areas, forty-one was a little on the low end, but I just didn't have room to make, um, any additional adjustments.
Will that new position, um, the captain, will he do things besides fire inspections?
Yes, they will do things other than fire inspections. Um, I, I think that you have to realize that fire inspection takes a lot of time. And, but yes, there's, you know, all the data entry for that we need to cover. You know, they're keeping track of all the training and the fire calls and the data that goes with it so that when we get audited for our, um, fire insurance fees, we, we have that data. We're supposed to keep data up for, um, the state. And some of that's been kind of.
Will the, uh, full-time chief have, um, additional or expanded duties beyond what the deputy chief has been doing?
Yes.
Plus authority.
It's the authority, it's the statutory authority that the fire chief had. Now, you asked me a question that in my opinion, leaves me saying something that I don't want to say. I felt that everything I needed from a full-time chief, I was getting from the deputy chief. Okay? Until about four years ago. I have since been getting more than what I was getting before. So with the way the job description is written and with the statutory authority, um, I expect a lot from the chief, um, but a lot of it is administrative. If you ask me, can Todd run a fire site? Can he run an incident command? I think he's one of the best in the state. You know, I always believed he had a skill at administrative and from two thousand until two thousand fourteen, I, I got a lot of it. But, you know, he was only the deputy chief and there were some things that were out of his purview. But I, I think if you see what we've been seeing, we're pretty, we think we've got a top-notch option.
If you were able.
Go ahead.
If you're able to move some money from the POP, how many POPs do we have existing and versus what we're trying to budget for?
We have one existing. I shouldn't say that. We probably have three, but one is primarily shows up. There may be a, a couple others that work some time here. I know Gil works some time here and there, but it's, it's pretty hit and miss. Joel is our primary. And, um, with the way it's budgeted, we're not going to cover as much time as we had originally hoped for, but we can cover a lot of time. But we've been, if we continue to go with two full-time in the fire department and three full-time employees, uh, we should be able to, to meet our requirements, at least in the interim. Hopefully at some point in time, we can make some other adjustments.
You assuming the fire chief is going to be responding to calls then on a regular basis then and be part of his duties?
Okay, I need to, um, since we tabled the item, we need to move on and looking at the agenda, the next item I think probably needs to be tabled too because it goes with the one we just tabled. Would I be wrong in that? Or to do that one if we haven't done the first one?
Yeah, I, I move that we table resolution nineteen-nine, fund transfer fire department.
Second.
Okay, we have a, a motion to table item C. Would you, any, there's no discussion on table. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
I'm going to bring both of those back at the next meeting. Okay, resolution, I, um, um, nineteen-ten, you want to read the title for that?
Resolution nineteen-ten, conditional use permit declarations and findings, Lane and Sherry Smith, Sunshine Brewery LLC, one twenty-one South Main Street.
Okay.
Move adoption of resolution nineteen-ten?
I have a second.
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 So, yeah, this went before the planning commission also. There was not a whole lot of, uh, people talking about it, against it, whatever. The one thing to keep in the back of everybody's head is, uh, even if we allow this right now, the sign won't be going up for a while. They're going to wait till after the road construction. So, but it's met all the requirements of, you know, height and where it has to be in size and.
This one is actually the two conditional use permits that the planning commission reviewed, which includes the, um.
Oh, this is also the back, uh, deck?
Yes.
I didn't think that was included.
Yeah, I don't see it in here.
That was planned to be moved to the next one. Misty had done that. Her comment was perhaps that we tabled this item and address it at the next, uh, session as well because Lane Smith wasn't available tonight. He's the owner of Sunshine. And I, I believe he's planning on coming to the next council meeting on the nineteenth.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm.
What you're saying is there wasn't any.
There wasn't any.
Nobody was objecting to it.
Nobody was objecting to it, so.
And they get mail to tell them that's happening, right? So they were notified?
Yeah.
Did they have any, uh, idea what the, what it would look like?
Yeah. Is it in here?
It's in here.
It should be all in here.
We have it in our thing.
Yep. So it's a hanging sign.
But it doesn't give a very good one.
Above ten foot? No. Where is it here?
This would be the sign on the street.
Can't get this stuff to come up.
Perhaps since a privilege in the street also has to be put together, if it's going to be tabled, we could have it at the same time.
He wasn't planning on doing it until after he.
Right. It's not going to be, the sign itself isn't going to be put up until after the roadwork.
Yeah, until after the roadwork anyway.
So he wasn't planning on doing it anytime soon. So I don't see what the, why it should be a hangout.
I can't remember, is a privilege in the street something that comes to the council or is that something that's just unadministrative?
It comes through the council. Now, it's kind of funny. Cause a privilege in the street is almost exactly the same as an occupancy permit that that we sign by, that the state requires when we do a state project. But that didn't have to go through the council. So, um, but generally, when the state comes in and tells you, you have to sign the document, you sign the document. Now, when we have people who come in and they're complaining about, I, why do I have to do this? Then we, we go through the council and let the council handle it so that it's, they understand that they have an obligation when they're building over a right of way and that the council recognizes that.
Yeah, and I, and I think I recall that there's a statute that drives the privilege in the street requirements and, and it all has to do with liability issues that if a sign falls on somebody, that the city won't necessarily be on the hook for it to be the person with the sign. That if a sign falls on somebody, that the city won't necessarily be on the hook for it to be the person with the sign.
So, looking at tabling this, is that what we just said?
There's currently a, a motion, isn't there, to move forward with the resolution?
There is, but we could always-
Yeah, you certainly can. I, with regard, I, I don't think that there's, um, necessarily urgency to get this done tonight. But at the same time, I feel like everybody has had an opportunity to express their views. Plan commission has recommended it, so if you want to go forward, knowing that this is only the signage issue and that a CUP, a conditional use permit, is going to be back on the agenda for their other application at the next agenda, the council agenda, then, either way, it's fine.
And it, it, this is only for the privilege in the right-of-way?
Correct. It doesn't even address-
Let's just do it.
The signage that they're afforded the right to by ordinance, right?
And then they could come back to us when they need the other stuff. Okay, so, any other comments? Otherwise, we could call the roll. Call the, call the roll.
I didn't write that.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed five-zero.
Okay, so we got that much done and then they can come back with the other as they needed. And since planning commission took care of it, shouldn't be any problem. Okay, let's see once, um, hang on, I'm trying to get back to-
I just can't get anything else to come up.
Get back to my screen when I want to be on. Okay, so, would you read the next?
The wifi said-
Yeah, I just-
Resolution nineteen-dash-eleven, conditional use permit declarations and findings. McDonald's Restaurant, drive-through for McDonald's Restaurant, one-eleven East Tyranina Park Road.
Hang on. My computer, there it went. My computer did something on its own here. Hold on a second here. Okay, here we are. So, alright.
Turn it off and turn it back on again?
So, this is, now, this also went through-
It did.
You want to, okay, you need a motion, right? Okay, let's get a motion for the resolution.
Yeah. Move to approve resolution nineteen-dash-eleven?
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Now, Mike, if you want to update the council on this one?
So, they had their architect there at the meeting and we talked a little bit about the different, uh, different things that they had gone through to try to figure out how to make the drive-through better. So, the only thing we're really talking about or discussing here is the drive-through portion of it. Um, and some of the recommendations were to go from two entrances down to one. So, basically, there's only one entrance going in off of the, the, what's the road there?
Tyranina Park Road.
Tyranina Park Road. Um, instead of the two right now because of the confusion it causes with the two different roads there. So, they're actually looking at, uh, two in and one out, all in the same, same section, so it won't be split lanes. They're actually going to redirect the way the traffic is right now going to the drive-through. They're still going to have the split drive-throughs, but they're going to lessen that, that weird curve that you had to do because they were getting, yeah, people were getting stuck on that hill in icy, icy days. Um, and that they're going to route the, the truck traffic and all this stuff around the outside like normal. Um, and then there's only going to be one, one out. They've actually straightened, they've made the driveway so it actually is more straight shot for the trucks to get in there so they can offload their goods. And then obviously, they're going to do some aesthetics, uh, but that's not part of this right now. Just, just so you're known, know about it, they're, they're, uh, they're going to do some different aesthetics. So, those are the big changes right now. They looked at every different way of reconfiguring that driveway that you could think of. And this came down, it just came down to the, the placement of that, that site. There just really isn't many other great options, but this was one that will actually help reduce some issues that they've had at drive-through, at the drive-through. They're actually going to be able to get more folks stacked at the drive-through than they, than they currently can, so.
I, I was reading that that has occasionally been a problem, some of the cars.
Yeah. Yeah, exactly. Yeah, and they, uh, they're really, there, there's no plan to prevent that, but they actually, like I said, they have a few more, uh, people that they can stack inside the, inside the, the lot right now than they had before. And they, they actually went through and did studies to find out when, you know, how much traffic was going through at their high times and- so, they've done their, their part to-
I noticed on the, uh, their schematics, they've also got a pedestrian path to-
Yeah, yep.
Tyranina.
Yeah, they're working on more pedestrian paths and ways to get in there than just the car routes right now.
I, I would say that, um, the one thing I would change a little bit is that they don't actually have as much stacking as they had before. It's actually a little bit less, but it's, it's all, the part that they removed was after the order point. And that's that loop. And what they're trying to do is, they've got a, they've got calculations down to every, every second. So, they know how many cars they generally have going through the drive-through at their peak times, on their peak days, and how many, how many backups that will make in each spot and how close that will get to the intersection. And at no point in time have they or do they plan on hitting that point. Um, especially since they've got more competition in the city now. There's, a little bit of the stuff has dropped down. They also have added online order points, which has changed a little bit how the drive-through works. So, there are three online order points there, and then, what do they say? The maximum is two and a half minutes from the time you order until the time you drive away?
Yeah, and that, what'd they say, they're, they're averaging what, like eighty-five percent of their business?
Is drive-through.
Type, type stuff now, so, it, yeah, it would benefit them to have a faster flowing drive-through.
And they don't want to have any problems. They, they, you know, they've done all the calculations on what makes the most sense for people. Anything that creates confusion reduces their business, so they've, they've tried to analyze it to the max. So, it looked to me like they've done a pretty good job. The, the one item that we wanted to make sure was, is that they provided us some, a data on their peak times with, uh, a history, so, you know, maybe the busiest time is Fourth of July or the day after or, you know, whatever. You go through, pick out your top ten days that are average and you give us those peak days and then we look at, and then tell us how fast they were moving through historically on an average and we can tell you whether they're going to back up into the street. Half of this has to do with the county, because the county actually issues the driveway permit.
Oh.
We do not.
So, did they have to go to the county for this?
Yes, they do.
They still have to or did already?
Well, they, when they met with us as staff, the county was there. And they only have to fill out a permit, but the, the county engineer evaluates it. And that was what he asked for was, was that data.
That single driveway, yeah.
So, we, but I, I don't think there'll be any problem.
Well-
Because with the data they provided, I mean, they had so much data that it was, it was mind-boggling.
Um, actually, I think this will be an improvement because whether they do this or not, people are driving in on that second, where it's right now, two exits. And, uh, unless there's a car parked there to turn left, they come in there. And it, it's very, you know, you, it's kind of like, watch out, you know, bumper cars here. So, I think this will be an improvement. You know, it'll slow down a little on the exit, I think.
Well, we can always hope.
Yeah.
Okay, so, but, yeah. Uh, any other comments or questions? Otherwise, we can vote on this one.
And the landscaping, that'll be subject to approval? Or is that already done?
Well, that's part of the site plan, but Dustin already signed off on it.
Okay, well, so we'll look forward to seeing that too. All right, call the roll.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passed five-zero.
Alright, let's get this computer back to where I need it to be. Yeah. We've already done item F, so we're moving to item G. Um, ordinance twelve-oh-one, would you read that title, please?
Ordinance twelve-oh-one, amending section six-sixty dash forty-four, official zoning map, city of Lake Mills, Wisconsin. Parcel two-four-six, zero-seven-one-four, one-eight-four-three, zero-zero-one, Brookstone Meadows.
And this is the third reading?
Correct.
Okay, so we're going to need a motion for the third reading and/or any discussion that you have on this.
I move ordinance one-two-zero-one.
Second.
It's a tie. Who's going to get it? Oh, Vicky got it. Okay. So, we've got a motion and a second on ordinance twelve-oh-one. And, um, so, and any other discussion before we vote? Seeing none, call the roll.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Motion passed five-zero.
Okay, moving on, and you can get ready. You can read ordinance twelve-oh-two title.
Ordinance twelve-oh-two, amending placement of stop signs.
Okay, now, we've had discussions on this. Does anybody have anything or, is there a motion for the third reading?
I move adoption of ordinance twelve-oh-two.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you. Okay, now, any other discussion on this? I think we talked about it pretty good on the first night, so. Okay, call the roll.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed five-zero.
Okay, thank you. And that goes to our future agendas. We do have our Thursday night meeting next week, which we already talked about, which is a public, open meeting downstairs and, um, about Sandy Beach. So, that's on the agenda. Um, our next council meeting is in two weeks. Uh, what else am I missing? I think I'm missing a meeting.
Have we established another time to meet regarding our, um, branding opportunities?
No, and we need to do that.
And, Mike needs to be in charge of that because that's part of his duty, says vice president, sure. And I messed up last meeting when we had that meeting, because I was running that meeting and it should have been probably you. My apologies on that one. I realized it when I got home. I thought, oh, Diane, you did the vice president's job, so. Okay, so, do you have any feelings on when you want to do the branding meeting?
Uh, I guess the, the question is, do we want to have something in place before we get the bids for the water tower?
No, actually, we're good on that. We've kind of held a spot.
Okay.
And based on, and we showed them some of the things that we were looking at and they were like, yeah, okay, we held the expensive one. And you've looked at the more moderate-priced block, or not block, but-
Script.
Talit, lettering.
Yeah.
And, so, yeah, they were, they were pretty comfortable with that we were within the scope. Now, if you, if you decide on ten colors, then, yeah, we're in trouble, but I think we can, if we can stay within three or four, we're in good shape.
Okay, so, we really have to work with the Cream City with their schedule.
Yeah, as long as you have it before they start painting again, which probably, you know, they're going to strip it all down and then they start painting it. So, you, sometime in July, we need to have it in place.
Okay, so we got time to talk about that and maybe you can get with them and see if they have some, some evenings free and then we'll, we'll go from there and try to schedule it.
Talk about it again at next meeting?
Yeah.
So, we'll talk about it in two weeks. Any other, let's see, there's an, okay, we have the Mulberry Street meeting on the twenty-first. We just talked about, which is the following Thursday. We're starting to do Thursdays here now. And, um,
The fourteenth is Sandy Beach Boat Launch.
Yeah, fourteenth, twenty-first, for Mulberry Street. Is there anything else? I don't think there's anything else in March. I think we're okay, so. Alright, so, seeing nothing else, um, would you read the convening information for item eleven, please?
Convening to closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute nineteen-point-eight-five-sub-one-E, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session.
Please, our motion to move into closed session.
So-
Oh, we just, chorus, there. Good job. Uh, Mr. Fritsch, I think, I heard first. And, um, second?
Second.
I got the second, okay, there. Okay, so we've got the second. Um, all those in favor? Oh, no, you get the call, sorry.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed five-zero.
Okay, thank you. So, we will not be opening up again into open session in, on tape. So, thank you for watching and we're adjourned with the regular session.